It's better to fail in a cause and ultimately succeed than to succeed in a cause and ultimately fail. May thy work be done here and may thy program be carried out above personality and for the good of the people of Madeira Beach. This we pray, amen.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Mr. Schatz?
Here.
Mr. Hodges? Mr. Lister?
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Here.
Now you caught me off guard on that one. I've always laughed. Thanks Shane, I appreciate that one. At this time I'll entertain a motion for approval of the, uh, excuse me, for the approval of the divided minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I so moved.
Motion's been made in second, is there any corrections or? Let's see, please, call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Next, approval of the agenda, at this time I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I so moved, Mr. Mayor.
I so second.
Motion's been made in second, is there any special on the agenda? The city clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Right, next consent agenda. This section is reserved for public comments when matters are concerned pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Did anybody else asleep this evening?
I'll say something.
Alright, Mr. Lewis, right here.
I'll say this only because parking was mentioned before by the city manager. It seems throughout our recent history, particularly in state developments or even for our rec center and restaurants and things like that, we don't plan for adequate parking. We never do. Originally, our restaurant parking was barely adequate and then sometime later was reduced by fifty percent. Uh, on the rec center plans, I initially commented, uh, after we stated how efficient all of the planning was to fill the ballparks into an optimal segment, you know? Every place had a ballpark or tennis court or something like that, but there's no place for parking. Now we have large athletic events coming to the city, all of that, and there's really, you know, it's gonna be a parking problem continuously because we haven't planned adequately. Uh, even for things like our new Marriott hotel. Uh, they're starting to have seminars in their conference rooms and things like that, and they have a restaurant open to the public. It's about a ninety-room motel with ninety-one parking places and I don't know which is which. And you don't even plan for parking for the place, you know, for the housekeepers or the chefs, you know, or the administrators. It's gonna be a problem all over this town and largely because we just don't think of it enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, as you will. Next, consent agenda, at this time I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Make the motion for consent agenda.
Motion's made in second, is there any special amongst the commission? Is there any comments from staff, Mr. Crawford?
Um, Mr. Mayor, we, the staff recommendations for approval, if you look into, on, on your tab G, uh, the meat and potatoes of the real thing is maybe the one, two, three, fourth paragraph under discussion, um, the, the letter to the state land, uh, plan agencies specify that the amendments to the city's comprehensive plan are unnecessary at this time except for, and there's, this is really just a technicality and, uh, staff would recommend its approval.
Is there any further comments? The city clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges, uh, Vice Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Finished business, we have nine, new business resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero one, Mr. City Attorney, would you please read my file one.
Yes, this is resolution two thousand fifteen dash ten, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida adopting the two thousand fifteen Pinellas County local mitigation strategy and providing for an effective date. It was agreeing of resolution two thousand fifteen dash ten by title one.
At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'm in motion to bypass resolution two zero one five dash ten.
Sorry. Motion's made in second, is there any special amongst the commission? Mr. City Manager, is there any recommendations from staff?
Staff recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further discussion? The city clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Alright, next reporting correspondence, this is where it gets a little bit long. Uh, first of all, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Commissioner Lister, I believe you were elected as second vice president now for the, uh, bigger cities?
Yeah, first.
First vice president.
First, I'm first.
Absolutely.
I'll be president next year.
Congratulations. Congratulations, I apologize, I know I was planning on attending, uh, but I had a medical procedure that went south, so, but congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Uh, a little bit more news on everything else and I enjoy how everybody's getting out here, we, we work around Madeira Beach, uh, everybody's involved with different committees and, uh, different, uh, things out there and promoting the city. Uh, last week I was actually voted and put in as, I'm now the president of the EMS advisory board for Pinellas County. My first meeting was with the county administrator, so it's very, very positive. Uh, the county board's gonna be a little more interactive with us and right now, that last thing we talked about in the last meeting was some things looking to break forward, not only to the city of Madeira Beach, but the rest of the county and the rest of the municipalities, so, uh, I look forward to that position and I'm very happy with the county administrator and his, uh, his, uh, thinking to be a little more interactive with that. Also, I was elected and sworn in the week before, I am now the president of the mayor's council in Pinellas County and, uh, Mayor Schatz knows how that is actually, that's, that's a very nice position, I'm, I'm honored that, uh, my colleagues, the other twenty-four mayors of Pinellas County elected me to that position, so, uh, I'm very proud and I wanna thank y'all very much for all of you, everybody's support and help and, uh, once again, that just gives Madeira Beach a strong voice out there and, uh, it shows that we're leaders in Pinellas County, guys, we are. So thank you very much for everything everybody's done the last couple of years. Uh, next, um, I'm also on the tourist development council of Pinellas County and I received this, uh, Gulf Bay, I don't know if y'all have seen this before. I'm sure, uh, Commissioner Lister being down in District One, you've seen this a few times, but this goes out to six hundred thousand people around the country, the different countries. And, uh, working with that board, uh, David Downey wants to say a little thank you to the city of Madeira Beach, so if you look at this issue, guys, center of the magazine, it's all about Madeira Beach here. So, guys, congratulations, that's, uh, like Mr. Lewis said, uh, huh? I can go ahead and get your coffee if you want, it's, uh, actually, it's, it's not really distributed here locally, it's actually through New York, Germany, the Midwest, uh, you know, to, to travel destinations, trying to get people to come here to Pinellas County. I'm sure y'all have been following, we're probably gonna break, uh, bed tax dollars by probably three or four million dollars again this year, which is outstanding and we've been on working and I've, I've had a lot of help from city manager, we've been trying to get a little bit more bed tax dollars here from the city of Madeira Beach for beach projects and beautification projects and, uh, so that seems to be working and that's what it's about, so if we can get a few more dollars here, you know, those bed tax dollars getting back into the city. So Mr. Lewis brought up a good point, we are moving, I think the city manager's done a great job with staff because before we had parking that wasn't being utilized and I think the signage is helping out, but we are seeing that we don't have enough parking. Madeira Beach at one time was something to do, is how it was marketed, now we are pushed out there, it's a must-do. John's Pass and Madeira Beach is a must-do and that's how, uh, the CBB is pushing Madeira Beach, so, uh, guys, we've done a great job here in tourism and I mean, it shows our parking revenue. I'm sure y'all see the crowds over spring break and it does indict, I mean, there was no break between January and beginning of spring break. I know, Commissioner Lister, I know you've been busy booking your places, uh, talked to businesses, all businesses are up twenty-three percent over last year, so guys, that's outstanding. That's outstanding, we have more new businesses here, so that just gives us, creates more revenue for us, so, for us too.
I think we had more traffic this year.
Yeah.
I don't ever remember, it was a public bombing and it was just crazy.
Which it, it, it does, it's a little of an inconvenience that you gotta remember, that's why we're able to keep our military at one point nine nine.
I try, when you get a little irritated, I go, oh, well, thank you.
That's right. When they go home to their cities, they're paying sevens and sixes and, you know, so when you tell them, yeah, when you, when you get there and sit there and brag, you know, uh, you know, we're the lowest military in Pinellas County and I really wanna thank staff, Mr. Crawford, you and your staff to be able to do everything you've done with that, uh, that low military, but I know that our parking revenues are probably gonna surprise us this year, from what we see. So guys, that is it from my end, is there any other reports?
You have been busy, my darling.
Yes, you have.
Well, that's what I told the new vice mayor, look out, if I gotta go somewhere, you got a schedule.
Yeah, and you not only do that, but the, uh, the fisheries from western D.C. also have to handle that, so just tell us a little bit.
A little bit, uh, yeah, and I was gonna bring that up, uh, we had Congressman Jolly was here last week and it was in support of H R seven seventy-four, which has to do with, uh, illegal fishing in the Gulf of Mexico and had as foreign vessels fishing in federal waters. Twenty percent of all illegal fish caught in the Gulf of Mexico actually come through John's Pass.
How much?
So, twenty percent.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, excuse me? Illegal fishing, yeah, from foreign fishing vessels, so this, uh, bill is something to actually give a little bit more teeth for enforcement, actually get hungry insecurity involved so they have a little bit more enforcement dollars that you go after, uh, to stop this. The way it works right now is the coast guard board these vessels, the coast guard has no fishing powers or regulations. They'll get on the vessel and check for life jackets, life boat, or life rafts, things like that, but nothing to do with the fisheries, it's NOAA or actually the F W C or shares the part. Or now, if this bill is passed, it'll be company insecurity. So it was great to have Congressman Jolly here, uh, down in John's Pass and, uh, Congressman Joyce coming to, uh, the city of Madeira Beach and, uh, it was, we were welcome to see him there in support of this bill on fisheries.
Good job, Ray.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Um, a couple of things, if you wanna drive this out a little bit longer. We did get a bill on supper houses, so that's a plus. They didn't pay attention, we're getting nothing on the vacation rentals, they're not paying attention, but the first bill, the city bill's passed for medical marijuana. So, good thing we have our ordinance in place. We're ready to go.
Uh, Vice Mayor, I had a meeting with, uh, we actually, a couple of our senators had a meeting with Senator Brandis and, uh, one of the topics that did come up was, uh, on the, uh, the rentals and I guess that's something to come up with for this year.
No, I was wanting to say they're not gonna do anything.
And it seems like some of your brainers is dragging this feeling on this one.
They all are.
Yeah, so I don't know what's gonna be done with that, if anything, the entire, the entire session, so.
That one, I mean, if you look at it from a political spectrum, I, I hate local politics, but it, that, that's scary for any local politician because it's like, you know, home rule versus tourism and you promote both a hundred percent of the time, you know, basically, you know, you wanna protect your neighborhoods, but you want an influx of tourism to, you know, draw money and so I, I can see that probably being, you know, shelved for quite some time, so I think the, the, the more local control that we can do, you know, Commissioner Paul, you've been very active with that, uh, you know, our guys, it's funny, I got a complaints email the other day. It's tough for the recording room, uh, one of our guys has a, an alias out there, he's out there pretending to be somebody trying to rent long-term and I got a complaint about this guy coming in and it's actually one of our guys, so I mean, the, the, the games are being played and we're actively out there looking and, and trying to, you know, stop this, we're not trying to, you know, throw anybody in jail over it, we just want it to end and so, um, if it doesn't look like we're playing an active role, it's because there's, there's a, a certain element of shadow games that we play there to, to really get a control.
We do have a big case next month on the special magistrate, correct? The one that said he would stop and didn't stop, so next month we will have a, a case, it'd be nice if you guys came in, supported our deputies.
That is one and, and Commissioner Paul, I think, is, is realized how I've been handling it, but people have come in and said, Shane, I, I, I didn't know and, and nine times out of ten, I think they might be the S and E, but, uh, you know, there, there's always the, the person that just was, was not paying attention and he says, I have eight contracts out there going through October of two thousand and fourteen. I don't think that we should, that should be the reason why those eight contracts don't come and have a positive experience in Madeira Beach, so I've been allowing for that, but at that point, that has to be documented and it has to stop and I think that is what Commissioner Paul was alluding to is some people will keep going and, you know, get, get every dime they can and that's when our guys step in and put the kavash on that.
And I've also been working very closely with the tourist deputy head of tourist board at the county on, uh, illegal rentals and not paying the bed tax.
I think, uh, or Vice Mayor Paul, if you want to, just, uh, at least generically allude, you know, uh, Commissioner Paul took a very active role in what we thought could have been a sober house in Madeira Beach and, um, after a lot of research on her part and some active participation by a lot of staff, um, that turned out not to be, but, uh, Commissioner Paul, I don't know if you wanna, or Vice Mayor Paul, if you wanna allude to any of that, but, um, we, we are on top of it, uh, when, when they come in. Commissioner or Vice Mayor Paul took a real active role in this one because we, we certainly don't want that, especially in the section of town that it was being located in, but I think now everybody's relatively, if it, if it turns out to be what he says it is, we're okay. And, and if it, if it does get out of control, he's offered up almost every assurance that we'll be able to step in and, and regulate it from a city standpoint.
Just gotta work closer with our deputies, he's going to run an agreement, are we, is Lynn working on the agreement?
We're putting everything together as we speak, so.
And Chad Johnson, that is, that's the guy, he's been over there for a couple of years now with the same program, so I can see where it would be an issue with Mr. Johnson, of course, I'm glad he was production.
He's a, he's a good guy.
Right, thank you.
You're a good meeting, Eddie.
Um, which brings up one more thing, did any of the commissioners hear anything on, uh, Senator Brandis's communication bill?
Um, plus the effects on here.
Go ahead and, uh, give a little update on that, because I was remembering the status of Senator Brandis.
Wasn't in my email one day.
You're getting the ones on, on the, yeah.
We should have been able to leave the cities, I believe, uh, Mayor Waters sent something out to the city, the cities and also the legal matters.
Yeah, I see.
And basically, just, uh, a little bit, everybody was kind of upset, uh, what happened was a few years ago that, uh, the Diamond Naples had a lawsuit and, um, let's talk, it might be somebody with this one on, uh, um, right ways for, uh, utilities and the city actually won. So what happens is, we're usually, we'll do a fifty-fifty split when we do things of right ways, providing a road or any kind of projects, the city will usually work with the utilities and it'll get fifty for moving the power lines or whatever like that. Well, I guess with, uh, what happened down in Naples, the communication, uh, people were too, uh, were looking for a senator to sponsor this bill and Senator Brandis is the one sponsoring it. So everybody was kind of outraged thinking that it was gonna come back all onto the public municipalities that have to pay if we wanted any utilities moved. And I'm just kinda giving, the dummy version that was given to me, uh, so basically how it's gonna work, and what Senator Brandis has said and they're still working on the bill, is to try to get it back where it's a fifty-fifty split, where not one party or the other parties have to fill the whole room.
I would say you like that one.
Yeah.
You know, they have to amend it to do that, because the terms of rights and forms was all in the city, if you put the municipalities.
Correct.
And obviously, this, like the city says, well.
Exactly, exactly, matter of fact, uh, Mayor Waters was a very, let's say, exciting voice on that, you know, topic that Senator Brandis last week, so the senator's working on it and I think, uh, a lot of people didn't have a chance or, or the senator really didn't, uh, get out there with what he was trying to do with this bill, so I think, uh, uh, with his, uh, I think Jeff will, will do a good job with it, I think Jeff's been pretty fair, yeah, there he goes, number one, so, for our district here, so, except for.
Except for me?
Yeah. But he, they don't touch, I, I, I don't know if both of them, they're, uh, they're shying away from that one pretty hard, so.
The short term rules, you know, why don't you? Those Airbnb and HomeAway, and they got deep pockets.
Yeah, there's a lot of lobbyists that tell us they're reporting them, so.
I know, I confronted a few of them during senate hearings.
So, just to backtrack a little bit, we're, uh, you know, the tourist development council decided to spend more money again on advertising as opposed to infrastructure, which is, let's hope that's wrong.
Uh, actually, that's, that's not the case, uh, 'cause I actually, I went ahead and, uh, I was the one that made the motion, I made the motion for this, and what it is, is a sixty forty split for advertisement to, as far as infrastructure politics, but remember, we're up from the last time we did.
With the extra money, we can definitely do that, but John, John Lovett Day's coming up, uh, next month and, you know, that, we made these, these events happen because there wasn't anybody in the past for, in September, you could throw a rock, you wouldn't hit anybody, so advertisement does work and, and we're, and we're getting to that point, but we, we maybe put the cart before the horse and like that says, you know, we might not be in our parking, but in September, three years ago, you, you, you could throw a rock on anybody, I mean, there wasn't that many people in John's Pass in that, that time of year, so, you know, you gotta build up to these and, and, and find out, so if we could get some money from the T V C for the infrastructure of helping build the lodges or, or parking, even land acquisition would be fantastic, because you know, that's a big, big question for you.
And, and that's the main thing in looking at things like that, and, and the discussion, the three, the three that voted actually for, you know, more of a fifty-fifty or higher spread for the infrastructure, was this three cities that want to build baseball stadiums.
Oh, I see.
You have Dunedin that wants, needs to build a new stadium to keep the Jays, you have, they wanted to need to build a new stadium to keep the Phillies, and you got San Pete that's gonna need to build a new stadium for, to keep the Rays, which, look, I support it, but you're not telling me people come here with the baseball, why do they come here, Commissioner Schatz?
I'm for the fan, the same.
But the baseball's a good, there's ice in them, it's not too bad.
And you need things to your restaurants and things like that, that, that.
Same tape, put water and, you know, everybody's coming up, but they're bringing their, their game up, you know, it's an extra business.
Because the last round, and I think it's finished, and that's why all these questions come up, is, uh, the end of this year is, uh, is where we satisfied the, uh, for the raise, the hundred and eleven million dollars that they used that tax dollars to build the, uh, proppant field. That was a lot of money.
It was.
You start, and I just can't see where my thoughts are, why are you gonna put all your money into three little projects like that, we could split it up more, like I said, build, build a parking garage, run, um, Chicago, do you think you could build one for two, three million dollars?
The ten thousand dollars a spot on.
Ten to fifteen grand a spot, depending on the size you want, so, yeah, you could, you could do something.
Yeah, I mean, now, if you kinda broke it down like that.
The best option, that's just build the garage, okay.
You got, you got pretty, right?
That land.
As long as you're not telling me to build a baseball team, I'm happy.
And you know, there's an optimal size for your parking garage, you know, it needs to be well over a hundred and fifty feet, about a hundred and six feet, so there's some other sizes you gotta deal with, you can't just stack them on top of each other, we had that in John's Pass, that one, this company wanted the company to build the elevator.
And listen, the, the.
Don't get your car in, that's your question there.
The big part about bringing people to Pinellas County, I think we're going to a, you know, a number one tier market, we've always been a number two tier market, we're overtaking Old England, what we're bringing here to Pinellas County, and it's advertisement. I mean, it's advertise, and advertisement costs dollars, what, uh, the, uh, members of the CBB have been doing and advertising to Pinellas County is outstanding, some of the things that you'll get a chance, I mean, you've probably seen some of the commercials on TV and some of the advertising, I mean, there's some of the, the, they call it gorilla advertising, like when there's big snowstorms up in, uh, Chicago and stuff like that, they'll go around and make snowmen saying, you know, with things holding signs, go to Florida or head south, Pinellas County or something like that, so, uh, it's, uh, they think outside the box didn't work, so I mean, like I said, we've seen it increase to twenty to twenty-three percent and that's going back to, uh, some of the things looking at R E M S, you gotta also remember, I'm sure you could talk to the fire chief, more visitors were happening here. It's starting to put a little taxing of resources on, on, on R E M S and fire stations and all of those, so, so these things go hand in hand when we're seeing an increase. I know EMS's reports are out and, uh, they're running about an average of eight hundred runs every month now. So I don't know if everybody's aware, the county has gone ahead and, uh, moved forward with, uh, doing a five-year contract with paramedics plus, an additional five-year contract. Uh, the great thing is, right now, paramedics plus or Sunstar runs fifty-four units here at Pinellas County, what the county's gonna work on, what needs to happen is move it to seventy-four units. That's from what I've got to report from our department and other departments are, they're waiting up to thirty minutes on a, a non-emergency or, 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 a, a real, uh, uh, emergency call where somebody needs to be transported, but it's not a life or death thing, but here's the bad thing with that, you've tied up that engine sitting at a scene for thirty minutes where they should maybe be there for ten to fifteen minutes then back on call. So it's, it's tying up a resource where that engine, twenty-five, our engines down in John's Pass, they get another call here in Reddington, so that means either Simba's gotta roll over here, he's got Pinellas Suncoast or Treasure Island working on Mutual Eight. It's, your response times are going from where Madeira Beach guys can be anywhere, just there to two and a half to three minutes, now you're looking at it where it can be five to eight minutes for response times, I don't know, if you're having a heart attack, I don't think you want to wait five to eight minutes. So, they know, I really applaud the county, I mean, you know, I know we cuss the county on some things, but for them pushing, uh, paramedics plus to put an additional, I think that's twenty additional units on the road, is really good for us, it would be real good to get them to where, before we did not have a unit stationed out here. Uh, the last couple of years, you'll notice that we've had, uh, there's usually a unit being painted at Archibald or over here at Seven Eleven, quarter of a hundred fifty, if you call it Boulevard, yeah, before, uh, it was actually painted in Simba, so they're getting better, but they need a few more units out here and I'm sure, has anybody heard the discussions on, uh, station twenty-six at Reddington? Did you read anything about that in the beach? That'll probably be the next big thing rolling out in the county, uh, there seems to be a lapse of coverage in the Reddingtons between, uh, Madeira Beach and, uh, Pinellas Suncoast, so there's probably gonna be a discussion, we, what the city's gonna try to cover that, I mean, right now, uh, it sounds like Pinellas, uh, Pinellas Park, or Pinellas Fire, or Pinellas Fire is trying to cover that, but, uh, I think, uh, Madeira Beach, we could, we could, that's also for that, so.
Did they ever talk of, of sending, uh, one of these trucks to a, a station like Madeira Beach? They have to come all of a sudden off, go to the alarm.
Yeah.
Here they come from who knows where, clear over in Pinellas Park or something, when they could be right here to handle all this area, all this area that we've got, like you're talking to Reddington, North Reddington, clear down to the bridge of Indian Rocks. I mean, I mean, I don't understand their thinking, Fraser Island, go the other way.
That's a little bit of the county, we'll go back to the county on that one and, uh, and, and what it is, 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 in the system that they tried to do here about a year and a half ago, is go to fire transport, where each station would actually have a transport unit in it, so you would actually be going to probably ninety, you know, ninety transport units instead of people fifty-four, so, and, and the problem is, right now, I think there's twenty-five units of fire stations sitting right now that could turn the key on, but the county doesn't allow it, you know, and that's all, it, I mean, it's money, it's the politics, I, I believe, you know, the county, I'm sure is getting a little bit of a cash cow to the general fund through
Sure.
Paramedics plus and, uh, it's, it's, as long as they increase the system services, I don't see where there's gonna be an issue, but sooner or later, we're gonna have to go to fire transport, I mean, Hillsboro County's done it, uh, City of Tampa's done it, I think, uh, right now, three, over three quarters of the state is fire transport, so eventually, I mean, it works everywhere else, why doesn't it work in Pinellas County?
It'll happen eventually.
Yeah, the county's gonna fight it all the way, 'cause I think it produces ten million dollars for a general, uh, good general.
That's one of the big, big.
Oh, let's tell them my thing out, you'll be changing the topic. Uh, St. Pete Beach just adopted, I've got it, this is probably the organs.
Yeah, call that neighbor.
Yeah.
It was on TV yesterday, I think it was morning, too.
I want, want you to give our city manager congratulations.
For what?
For, for everything. For thirty years.
Thirty years?
At least I've been trying to have trucks. Big trailer trucks, they off in Madeira Way, they shake all the buildings and everything and then we, we got the bumps and that made it worse, you know, and it hit those babies, boy, our building just shakes like a leaf and this is so, and this is a goal.
Stroke of a man.
Our city manager, right here.
One, one phone call.
Has accomplished this job that I've been trying to get done for at least thirty years.
Well, you gotta pick up the phone, that's, uh, that was all it was, but, uh, the people that need deliveries that live or conduct business on there were in a lot of those trucks, it's just the generic truck traffic that we're gonna, but that's ninety percent of it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I appreciate that.
Like, for instance, too, who needs delivery on Madeira Way besides the rest of the, they can come in the back way?
Uh, the whorehouse said that they get a semi-truck with beer deliveries and sometimes a drumboxer, but, I mean, it's very, very, very true.
Yeah, well, they can come in the back way too, sure, don't give me the story.
Anybody, anybody.
Don't give me this crap about that.
Is that the germ?
Actually, there is a couple of those.
Now, come on, guys, I never get to talk.
Oh, no, that's right, go ahead.
Well, I don't, I don't see anything very spectacular, but when, when I, when I want our, our city manager to get some credit for something for me.
You know, you got two more years to talk.
I know, but. Terry, I love you.
I love you too. You just keep talking, Ben.
Oh, no, it's okay, you could, I got rolling, I got a tough shoulder.
So your manager did good.
He did, he did do good. When, when I've asked, I'm team city managers for that same particular item, the W D.
That's why they're not here, okay?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Oh, okay, let me rephrase that, that's one of the reasons.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, but anyway.
Okay.
I want you all to know that.
Okay.
And not to get mad, if you had a big truck, you can't go down there, 'cause it'll take you the same amount of time to go up to the red light at a hundred fifty, go all the way around and come in on municipal drive.
What's a good, consider I'm a big truck?
Semi.
Not you're.
Terry's a big truck, okay?
Not, yeah, you guys are good.
No, no, commercial trucks, no, no, not Terry's truck.
I like the big truck.
You got a big.
We're talking about, we're talking about beer trucks, the best trucks.
I know, I know, we're talking about, the whole semi truck, right, it's different.
Hmm?
That's okay.
What?
Beer trucks.
Yeah, beer trucks is no good.
Listen, that's a popular beer truck.
Priority here.
Yeah, no.
Hey, we're gonna send them around, they're gonna come right along there.
I said, I send them down to Crystal first and then let them.
No, 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 actually, I'll say the next motion for the beer truck.
Well, you do, I don't wanna, you need beer, but they can go. You know me, I'm.
They break lock it too.
I think we should put some taps to the floor at city hall.
Here we go.
This is still mine, you guys. Hi.
This is the city manager, wrote a question. I know that, uh, sent you an email from the, uh, from Bob Esposito with DOT. Was there any more conversation and since the commission's here, the two, uh, just putting up the, showing the both lanes turned left there on a hundred fifty, if I'm wrong, Boulevard.
Yeah, we're working, yeah, we have.
That would be great.
Yeah, if y'all guys noticed, and I mean, it just got me this last session, how that left lane will stack up because people and tourists just don't know both lanes turned left.
Right.
So, I had a discussion with Bob Esposito from, uh, DOT and, and I want to thank Mr. Crawford, he sent the city, uh, the city manager an email, so we're working on that one.
Yeah, DOT does a really good job. In fact, they, they have a computer program where they can just cut and paste the actual sign that we have to put up there.
Okay.
And they don't care if we post it, if we have to buy the sign and they just have to approve it. So, Dave's got those two work orders in to do those two signs and to, uh, do your, your truck sign. So, although we, we're, we're doing it, it, it hasn't been signed yet, so it probably won't be effective. Those signs sometimes make, take a month or two to make because everybody's asking for them, but, but in the next sixty days, you'll see that all posted up.
And I know that also, I sent you an email today and actually, I actually had a second phone call, this goes back to tourism guys. I was on the phone with a producer out of California, the name of the show is called Trading Jobs. It's actually a reality show out in Germany and it's been on for several years. I don't know if Mr. Crawford saw it, it was filmed in Germany there, but.
They're watching a lot of TV.
Yeah, I know you're German, it's outstanding. Um, so, uh, it looks like we might have these folks coming in shooting the international show and, uh, so Trading of the Jobs is the people that can come in, the commercial fishermen, they'll actually get to go to Switzerland and, and, uh, shoot a show over there, so, so it's very exciting. We'll get a little bit of international, uh, TV, uh, play out of that. And there was another one, Mr. Crawford, I sent you an email on, which was.
To Terry Belton, Lee Roy?
Yeah. For, for another, uh, TV show and, uh, so, guys, we're getting it, it's, we're on the map. It's outstanding, it's outstanding. And, uh, so, Mr. Crawford, we need to start thinking, uh, I'll go find money, but we can start thinking about parking lotism.
Uh, that's why you're, we're gonna take a look at that charter amendment. We got, we have lots of offers, we just have to create this right situation for the developers and they'll put it up, so.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, is there anything since we last spoke?
No.
Mr. City Manager, is there anything you like that?
Yeah, just quickly, Tom alluded to the fact, and he, he deserves more credit for it, uh, you know, he's gonna keep office hours now every other Monday for two hours. That's, that's a new practice. And staff, I had trouble too with keeping up. We have so much going on, you know, and keeping up and keeping the communication going. Um, that's actually taking money out of Tom's pocket or his firm's pocket, actually, because now my, my staff doesn't have to call him. He's gonna be here in those two hours around, uh, on the house at least, so he, he deserves a lot of credit for that. And it's, it's really proven, we've probably been doing it for about a month and it's really proven to be effective and staff has reacted well to it, so that, that's good. Um, just like that magazine right there, uh, we're gonna be in the centerfold, I guess, if you will, of the Allegiant magazine as well. Um, we got a, uh, an offer to be pretty much the premiere part of that and so Allegiant will have, uh, showcase, uh, of Madera Beach. Um, probably in this next edition, they'll be coming here to interview and we'll make sure that all the commissioners get interviewed and, uh, put it all inside. Um, budget requests, I, I, I don't wanna sound, I gotta turn that, maybe I use, I'm not gonna use it here, but I, I don't wanna be a, a jerk, but you guys, you, you guys have a lot of good ideas and a lot of things that you wanna see done, but you don't always tell me in time to put it into the budget, let's say that, right? So, um, I want you to start brainstorming now because Vince and I have already kind of started on next year's budget. And, uh, I'm wondering, Amy or C, if you could create a very simple form for, uh, board, uh, commissioners to capital projects and then operational stuff. And Terry's like my sign guy, right? He loves banners. Well, Shane, I wanna see three different sets of banners. That's operational, that's not capital. Anything under fifteen thousand dollars, that's, that's just how we run in the business from day to day. But, um, the mayor alludes to a parking garage. Shane, I wanna see a parking garage up in Madera Beach this year, which for me, I haven't even if I started today, but you know, you get my point. Um, Shane, I want you to put five million dollars away for a parking garage. That's a capital expense and I need to know that. And you need to understand that, you know, if you, if you, if we started today, we can't build something, obviously, but we can get going on it. So, maybe the mayor wants to put forty thousand dollars into a budget to do the engineering or the architecture for that. That's, that's realistic. So, I can sit down with you all and go over your requests, but I'm hoping Amy and C, if you could, you know, put some sort of document together, get it out to the board of commissioners and probably get that to me by maybe the next workshop or at least the next, uh, board of commissioners meeting. Um, the other thing, while I, I mentioned that, I'm, we're holding off on any presentations or, you know, keys to the city or, you know, the Eagle Scouts coming in to tell us about the project until we have the auditorium, just so you're aware, we're not pushing anybody away, we're just kind of banking them so we can actually have space to do that. Um, your ban shell breaks ground on Thursday. Um, that's gonna be a major undertaking that we didn't, um, anticipate. But right now, I think I can fit it within the project budget and we won't have to do a budget amendment, so we're sitting good. That being said, and I've only done this one time before, I'm not asking you to leave me alone, but if we can not invent anything new for the next sixty days, so I can seal this baby up. In sixty days, this city center will be done. And it's, it's really a full-time job. I got, you know, Dave out there praying, uh, you know, the chief. Uh, Dave's my main guy on this and we really need to have some flexibility. It's, it's been twelve and fourteen hour days for the last couple of months just because of, we're in here now. Um, and I just need a little extra time to just do this upright, so if you got something made here, you know me, I'll take that, take it on, but if you could just kind of make some of those things and hold on to it, um, I'd certainly appreciate it and that's.
All right, Mr.. From businesses, Mr. Jordan, six thirty-seven.
Thanks for coming in, Mr. Lewis.
Um, coming off the season, if you guys.